Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, March 3, 2014, meeting of the Falmouth Board of Selectmen. I invite you all to rise and join the board as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Some procedural announcements before we begin. If you have a cellphone or some other device that might spontaneously make noise, we ask that you silence it or turn it off for the duration of your time with us. If you do decide to stay with us, please remember to refrain from any conversations here in the room because it can disturb the proceedings. If you decide to leave early, please do so quietly so that we don't disturb the proceedings. If you'd like to speak this evening, and there will be opportunities for everybody to speak, please come up to the microphone, identify yourself for the record. We may know who you are, but that doesn't mean the folks at home or the recording secretary knows who you are. And please identify yourself for the record, excuse me, I just said that, and direct all your comments through the chair, please. If you're recording this evening, state law allows that you may record audio simply by announcing to the board that you're going to do so. If you wish to record video, you have to ask permission to do so. At this time, is there anyone who wishes to record via audio or video? Okay. Announcements and proclamations. I think we, the only announcement we have are committee vacancies at this time. Do we have any other announcements this evening?
No, sir.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes, I'd like to make one announcement. It's actually an acknowledgement. I believe it's appropriate that Mr. Kazarian's first night, last night, working for the Falmouth Enterprise covering the Board of Selectmen. So I just want to acknowledge the many years of service he's given to this community.
Thank you. Any other announcements from the board? All right, we do have some committee vacancies. The Affirmative Action Committee has two vacant positions. The Board of Assessors has one. The Building Code Board of Appeals has two positions. The Cable Advisory Committee has two vacancies. Cape Light Compact has one alternate vacancy. The Conservation Commission has one alternate, excuse me, one full and two alternate. Cultural Council has six vacancies. The Design Review Committee has two alternates. The Commission on Disabilities has two vacancies. The Finance Committee has one vacancy. Historic Districts Commission has one full and one alternate vacancy. Human Services Committee has three vacancies. Solid Waste Advisory Committee has one. The Steamship Port Authority Council is vacant. The Substance Abuse Commission has four vacancies. The Town Building Committee has three, and the Transportation Management Committee has three vacancies. Anyone interested in applying for any of these, please come to the Town Hall, to the Selectmen and Town Manager's office, fill out an application, and we'll get you on the agenda for an interview. Next item on the agenda, minutes of meetings. This is the February 24 public session.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes of February 24, 2014, open session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes as presented. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition?
One abstention.
One abstention. Mr. Murphy was not present. And with that, we get to the meat of tonight's agenda. This evening is a workshop. We haven't had many of these this year, but we are trying to get more of them done. I would like to thank all of the committee chairs who are here this evening. We're holding this in the library. This is not being televised live because of the difficulties of doing so through the library system. We're not quite there yet, but it is being taped for replay. The board meets in order to make decisions and in order to gather information to make decisions. And this is one of those opportunities for all of you where we're trying to gather information. We've released, obviously, a few weeks ago, I think about a little more than a month ago, the Committee Handbook, and we'd certainly like to get your feedback on it. We'd also like to get feedback on a variety of topics per the agenda, including communications, membership, whether committees should be joined, disbanded, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a few items on the agenda here. We'll go through those, and we're going to be looking for feedback from all of you. And by all means, we don't bite, so you can move up in the rows if you'd like. We chose this venue because we anticipated larger crowds, but it looks like we did have a number of committee chairs that were unable to make it this evening. So with that, the Committee Handbook. I guess I could go through it section by section, and then if anyone has any questions or comments or suggestions or whatnot, please let me know, and we'll entertain the feedback. So the forward is pretty self-explanatory.
Could you start with the cover? Because I have some.
Oh, by all means, please, come up. Excellent. We like that.
I'm Judy Fenwick. Chairman of the Falmouth School Committee is my role this evening. On the cover, you have the words Committee Handbook and the seal of the town of Falmouth. And I'd like to recommend that you add the language that says Town of Falmouth, Falmouth, Massachusetts. Being associated with the Falmouth Education Foundation, we are often confused with the foundation that exists in Falmouth, Maine. So I would recommend clarifying which town this is for. And also on the cover to put something along the lines of the date, which I think you did with approved on the final one, and who distributed this, and contact information for anybody who had updates or questions about it. So that's the cover.
Thank you for the reminder.
They don't have microphones out there.
I know we, I don't know if I could acknowledge everyone. There is, I recognize some faces, and I apologize, I may not remember all the names. There is a sign-up sheet in the back, by the way, so anyone who hasn't signed up yet, please do so. We want to make sure that the information that is distributed is distributed evenly and equally to everyone. So we want to make sure that if some committees are not represented here tonight, that they do get the feedback from this meeting as well. So if you haven't signed up, please do so.
It is wireless, so we could just pass it.
We could pass the committee, yeah. So actually, the suggestion was made, and I think it's a good one, if we could just pass the microphone around, and you all could identify yourselves, please, so that we could get that on the record.
Hi, my name is Barbara Pratt, and I am the co-chair of the Traffic Advisory Committee.
Hello, James Porter, also co-chair of the Traffic Advisory Committee from the Police Department.
Michael Duffey, I'm the chairman of the Building Code Board of Appeals.
Tom Corovo, vice chair of the Conservation Commission.
Betsy Glutfelter, chairman, Conservation Commission.
Brenda Swain, vice chair of the Council on Aging.
Judy Fenwick, chair of Falmouth School Committee.
Chet Goldstone, chair of the Board of Health.
Ted Schmoll, chairman of the Affordable Housing Committee.
Stan Ingram, chair of the Agriculture Commission.
Eric Turkington, chairman of the Water Quality Management Committee.
Ahmed Mustafa, chair of the Veterans Advisory Committee.
David Hadad, chairman of the Zone and Board of Appeals.
Jason Chorches, chairman of the Beach Committee.
Noah Greenberg, vice chairman in Design Review Committee.
Art Calfee, chairman of the Design Review Committee.
Paul Dryer, member of the Playing Board.
Stephen Facet, member of the Finance Committee.
Judy Mignani, chairman of the Finance Committee.
Patty Haney, co-chair of the Community Preservation Committee, chair of the Falmouth Housing Authority.
Sandra Kuni, chairman of the Falmouth Recreation Committee.
Ed Gross, chairman of Bike Ways.
All right. And on to page two, the forward. Any questions or comments or feedback about that? Judy, you should keep a chair up here, actually.
I have a lot of, there's typographical errors, grammatical errors, and so instead of getting up every time I spot one of those, can I just hand in what I promised to give you months ago? But starting with the word forward, it should be spelled F-O-R-E-W-O-R-D. But I'll pass in future comments like that on a piece of paper.
Thank you. All right. On to page three, the Committee Membership, Section A, the appointments. Any feedback or questions about this?
Could you speak up?
Any questions or feedback about Section A under Committee Membership, the appointments?
I would just suggest that there are a number of grammatical errors and repetitions that are unnecessary, and that the whole thing be subjected to some kind of very strong editing.
Okay.
In order to finalize.
All right, so, well.
In this one, for example, the Board of Selectmen makes.
Can you take the microphone?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, in this one, I, I'm not an English teacher. I was an English major, yes, I'll admit to it, but it just says, the sentence doesn't read well. The Board of Selectmen makes appointments, but set the limits, for example. Got to decide whether you're British or American.
If there are grammatical, typographical errors, if you all identify them and provide them to us, we can make those necessary changes. I guess tonight what we're looking for are substantive changes, things that are significant oversights, or things that you believe should not be in here, that sort of thing. Jared?
Sorry, you were moving a little bit fast in the forward. I have a, the phrasing, in particular in paragraph three, from the perspective of the Board of Health, which derives our powers from the Commonwealth and is responsible for the health of people in Falmouth. But in some sense, it is the good of the town, but it is much more particularly the good of the people in the town. And so, one, and so I'm a little uncomfortable with the emphasis in general in the forward on the town administration and the, whereas for some boards, that may be appropriate, but because there are some powers which we have, which are, as I said, derives directly from the state rather than through the Selectmen, I want to make this forward perhaps a tiny bit more general. And I don't have, at this particular instance, a precise wording to do that, but I can't promise that I have tons of time to do it, but I'll try to think of some suggestions and send them for future comment. And along those lines, while we do consider a cost-benefit analysis, it is not necessarily the highest priority for us. And so, again, I think in order to make it, it depends on how general you want to make this forward.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the forward? All right, so we'll go back to the Committee Membership section. Questions or comments on the appointments, Section A? On Section B, the duration of appointments?
This may be in here, and I might have missed it, but this is something that's come up before. We've talked about it before, and I know when the Charter Review Committee came, this is a comment that I made. There was a time where you were trying to get all your appointments in for new, well, now there's so many vacancies, you don't have to do this, but you were trying to get all your appointments in in June, and everybody's terms ended in June. And my suggestion at the time was the regulatory boards have to have those three-year terms and are sort of already set into that, but perhaps the other boards, you could choose other months that would highlight when, you know, you could sprinkle them out throughout the year so that you wouldn't have quite so many interviews. Although I realize that you have to have them all during the year when there are vacancies. So I'm not quite sure where that would fit in here, but I just wanted to make that as a suggestion.
This is a good segue, and we do have appended to this the appointment policy, but that's part of the whole discussion, and that kind of feedback is good. That's what we're looking for.
Okay.
Well, yes, I was going to say that much of the language regarding appointments is in the charter, but that may not be necessarily substantive, and parts of the charter can be amended, you know, without having to go to town meetings. So that's something we could look at.
Okay.
In terms of changing the terms, if the town council doesn't deem it substantive, then we could make those kind of changes very simply at a town meeting.
Okay.
And not having to go on the ballot.
Unfortunately, the issue that you raised is, does not get helped by our vacancies because the terms still all expire on June 30 of any year. And so we are still in a position where, as you're concerned about, we have all the re-interviews and re-applications are coming up.
Right, but all I'm suggesting is maybe, other than the regulatory boards, you could stagger those other, start giving them three-and-a-half-year appointments or two-and-a-half-year appointments, like town meeting.
And one other thing, point, that has been in years past, was that the board waited for a new chairman to take over after reorganization, which is typically mid to late May.
Right.
I think it really needs to be the outgoing chairman who sets the agenda for, in other words, enables the folks in the office to line up all the interviews right at the end of May, so we're not against the timeline of the end of June, when we have had in the past vacancies on regulatory boards.
Right.
Meaning that we couldn't provide a quorum. And I think it's important that the board, in this, acknowledge that we need to do those notifications, number one, of folks who want to renew, but number two, schedule those interviews as close to the first of June versus the end of June.
Right, and what's happened in the past there, as you all know, because many of you were on the board when this has happened, is that people have gotten their letters of reappointment, I mean, to come for interviews on Saturday for the Monday meeting, and I happen to know about it because I've called somebody.
That's important. Right now, we should be starting that scheduling and acknowledging in the office that they need to start that process.
Well, if you remember, two years ago, we changed it, I think, when you were chair, if I recall, because we started sending the letters out around the end of March, and then we started doing the interviews in April, and we had them finished by May.
Right, last year, I know on our board, last year, everything was done in a timely manner. So that's good.
Yeah, so that's already in place.
Good.
In the back, Mr. Fineran.
Mark Fineran, Precinct 6. I just wanted to kind of add to hers or piggyback to it. We're like nine months into your chairmanship, and they still haven't done the committee liaison appointments. Maybe there should be some mechanics in there.
We'll be getting that, to that later in this agenda, yes. Any other questions or comments on the duration of appointments?
Michael Duffey, Building Code Board of Appeals. How do I know that, I just heard two vacancies on my committee this evening that I didn't know about? And so can I be, as a chairperson, can I be informed whose terms are up and so forth?
Yeah, that.
I know I can probably look and find it, but as a volunteer, it'd be nice if somebody could just provide that to us, so we could do our homework.
Although it's probably abundantly clear, I think the definition of overlapping terms should be made, should be made clear.
Anyone else? All right, the duties, Section C duties of Board or Committee. Questions or comments on this?
Look, if you've got the comment here, when someone becomes appointed to a board, they should go and find a copy of the bylaws that connect with that committee. That puts a lot, load on the person coming on to a committee. I think the chairman should get a copy of the bylaws for the individuals that come on the committee. I've been doing that for our people all along. And it narrows it down to just the parts of the bylaws that we're dealing with, not the whole thing. So that should be part.
Thank you. Anyone else? I saw some people come in late, so if there's a sign-in sheet in the back, if you're a member of a committee and you haven't signed in, please do so. All right, Section D, Committee Leadership. Questions or comments on this?
Stan Ingram, Agriculture. Establish a quorum requirement. I thought that was a pretty standard thing. And if it's standard, why is it, is that fluid? Do we have a choice to come up with our own quorum, or?
You don't, actually. It's a good question. I'm not sure why that is in there.
Okay.
Right, you'd have, understood that, and there was a call, a shout-out from the back, that the different committees have different numbers, and obviously, a quorum is one-half plus one, but it's understood, obviously, Betsy, if you'd like to come up, you can. It's understood that if it's a seven-member committee, obviously, the quorum is going to be four, so.
Well, that's not exactly true.
Okay.
Because on our committee, we have, if all the appointments are filled, we have seven regular members and three alternate members. So a quorum for a legal action is four, four of seven. But we have chosen, through all the years I've been on, for anything else other than notices of intent, RDAs, enforcement orders, and in that case, it's the quorum of the people who have been at all the hearings. Other than that, any votes we take, everyone has an equal vote, including the alternate members. So if there are eight, say, nine members there, then a majority is five, might be a five-to-four vote.
Okay.
So you do have to, for, in our committee, you have to establish a quorum, depending on what the vote is.
Very good. So maybe that answers your question? In some cases, there may be differing quarums for different purposes, and it's probably more applicable to regulatory bodies that have multiple, that serve multiple purposes, as the Conservation Commission does.
But you'd still need a quorum of?
If you could come to the microphone.
So does that, does that mean you still need a quorum of the number of regular members on your committee to have a meeting? I mean, if in the Conservation Commission, if only three of them showed up, they couldn't take any legal.
Correct.
But could they hold a legal meeting and vote on?
There's, it's actually a little complicated with the Conservation Commission and other regulatory bodies, because what will happen is they may open a hearing, and let's say there are seven people there for the hearing, but if it gets continued over a series of weeks, and some of the people don't show up, in the end, those seven people, there still has to be a minimum of four at the end in order to vote and take action on it, because that would be the minimum quorum necessary. If it happens that throughout those weeks, only three people end up being, having participated in all the meetings, then they've lost the quorum, and now they have to go through a process of either rehearing or getting permission from the applicant to approve with less than the quorum. It's, and it can be a little dicey, but that's where a regulatory board has different purposes and different legal requirements than, say, an advisory committee such as the Agricultural Commission.
So if, on my commission, as an advisory commission, if only three of us are there, it's a seven-member board, only three of us.
There's no quorum.
There's no quorum. So we can't do anything.
You can't meet.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, I think that's important to note. You can't hold the meeting.
Right.
You just, the meeting is dissolved, because then it's not an open, public meeting. It's an illegal meeting because you don't have a quorum, if it's not established.
I guess, I wonder if we have ever asked the question of town council, if there has ever been occasion where a public body who has, let's say, seven appointed members, could have a quorum of those present. Sometimes that happens with certain public bodies. They, in their bylaws or in their regulations, a quorum can be the majority of those present, but I don't know if that question has ever been asked about a board or committee in the town.
It has.
It has?
We are blessed with snowbirds on the Bike Ways Committee, and I've asked town council whether we could have a majority of those.
Of those present.
Those available, or a majority of those present, and he has said no.
No.
If the number falls below a majority of the committee.
Committee, it cannot.
Regular members, it's not.
Well, that answers that question.
I just had one other, I got a couple of calls from folks on committees in regard to this committee leadership, and the part that says in voting, and it says in maintain minutes, I think it needs to be in maintain committee-approved minutes. Minutes are not merely adopted by the chairman or any one member. They have to be approved by the committee. So in other words, there are a lot of, well, I had two different folks from two different committees call me, and that many minutes are adopted, but they didn't think that that expressed what actually happened at some of those meetings, and they wanted to be able to vote on them. And I think that's important, that we put in, maintain committee-approved minutes.
And that is important to note, that the chair of any given committee has no more authority than any other member of the committee, whether it's the Board of Selectmen or any one of the appointed boards or committees or commissions. The chair is simply the first among equals and is tasked with specific responsibilities. Being chair doesn't give us the authority to approve minutes on our own, it is something that has to be approved by the committee in question, so. All right, any last questions or comments on that? In the back, Mr. Fineran. I'm telling you, folks might want to get a little bit closer.
As far as the minutes go, it's still my understanding that many of the committees don't maintain them, and they don't make it to the website. I know the second part of that statement's true, so you might want to work on that as well.
Well, that's why we wanted attendance, to make sure that those not present would be able to follow up with them and make sure that they got the same information that all of you did, so. Section E, attendance. Questions or comments on this? In this particular instance, I want to call everyone's attention to this because we did have a situation where a resignation failed to make it to the board this past year, and it was sent in a timely fashion, but it was sent via email, and it was sent year, and it, it was sent in a timely fashion, but it was sent via email, and it was sent, and unfortunately, they misspelled my name, which meant that the email didn't get to me, so the resignation didn't get to me. And so, it was held up for a number of weeks before we could confirm, in fact, that there was a resignation. And so, this particular section has been modified, so that we ask for the resignations in writing and submitted to the board. Now, whether you hand-deliver it to the selectman's office, or whether it gets mailed to the selectman's office, either way is acceptable. But email is not acceptable, because it is too easily lost. If you misspell the address, we've had problems with the town's email server this past year, and under those circumstances, this is an important piece of paperwork, so that we can continue to fill vacancies. And if it fails to get to us in a timely fashion, then the vacancies don't get filled in a timely fashion. So, just to make sure that all of you are aware of that, and to make sure that you express that to your committees. Jared?
So, you have an extra sentence at the end of this, which is not related to, to resignations, which is, all applicants will be considered, and it, that's not, doesn't belong there.
Thank you. I agree.
The first sentence of the resignation section should be for those that are appointed, not elected. If someone's resigning from an elected position, they should be communicating that first to their chair, and then to you.
Any other feedback on the resignation section? Section G, Special Municipal Employees. Questions or comments on this section? The next category, Guidelines for Public Meetings. Questions or?
I think you back a step.
Uh huh.
I think you should split the section on resignation into vacancies, filling vacancies in resignation, because it's clearly, you're trying to weave two policies together, and you're better off to dissect them.
Oh, I see.
There's some confusion, actually, about how vacancies get filled. You might want to clarify that with a little sentence or two.
I have a couple other suggestions, too. I think we should split the guidelines of conduct, because they don't, they're not part of the policies.
Yeah.
I mean, they should have a.
Separate pages.
Start with a separate page. And the other thing I would suggest, that when we finish this, we might want to send it to an editor, you know, someone that we know, who writes well, like Judy, but we won't ask her to do it, because we know she's a very busy person. But someone who, who really can do that, and put it in a format that most people are accustomed to.
How you doing, David? That is on Board of Appeals.
I do.
The guideline of conduct for meetings, I think this is a good guideline, but I think all the boards and the committees probably should establish their own. I mean, this is, there's little nuances that don't work for some boards. But the reason I came up here, I was reading, clarify each other's ideas rather than critique them. Then, two down from that, separate people from the problem, critique ideas. It seems saying the opposite thing there. Could you, maybe somebody clarify that for me, please?
That might need some clarification, yes. I think what we're trying to do here, and I've had conversations with some of the chairs over the years, the, the whole point of putting this together is to establish a, a common baseline, if you will. It's understood, for example, that the ZBA or the Conservation Commission are going to be doing business a little bit differently, because as regulatory boards, each has their own set of governing laws versus, say, an advisory board, like the Bike Race Committee, which doesn't have to operate under those same guidelines and state laws. So, this is really, the, the whole handbook is intended to be a, a baseline, if you will, from which you may build up on top of it. So, if there are specific guidelines that the ZBA uses in its meetings or in its procedures, that would be on top of this. And if this is too detailed or too much, then, you know, this kind of feedback is appreciated, because we can scale it back a little bit, so that the common baseline is still established, but then each committee can build on it as they need to. Any other questions or comments about the guidelines? So, the next section here is Conduct for Members of Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Section A, Committee, Community Responsibility. And then there are a series of lines here, one through eight, or one through seven, excuse me.
Under Community Responsibility, number six, in making all decisions relative to individual appointments, he or she shall avoid political patronage by judging all candidates on merit, experiences, and qualifications only. That seems like a Board of Selectmen rule, or your policy, not really one that would go with a committee. Don't you think?
Thank you for pointing that out. A lot of this handbook, too, by the way, was compiled from various sources, and so some of the things in here might not seem applicable, and that's probably one of them, that this was, the Guidelines of Conduct is something that was borrowed from other communities that have done similar handbooks and similar guidelines, so some of this might need some editing. And again, that's why we've asked you all here to help us out with this. Anything else under this Section A?
Well, under seven, it should avoid voting on any matter, not manner. That's wrong word.
Another type of.
Editorial issue.
Last call for Section A. Section B, Responsibility to Municipal Administration, items one through three. Jared?
Again, this is a. This is a, a matter particularly for, for boards that have regulatory powers that derive not from the selectmen of the administration, but from the state, but, well, while it's of benefit for boards to have clearly defined policies, specifically supporting the administration as a, that particular phrase is one that is not, is applicable more towards advisory committees than to regulatory committees. I mean, we don't want to work against the administration, but it's not specific to support the administration that we're necessarily working.
I just have one comment on this section, and it's sort of the reverse of the way the section is written. This is how the boards and committees are supposed to support the Board of Selectmen and the administration. And I would just like to select, to suggest that all of us who have been appointed to committees are dependent on the support also of the selectmen and the town manager. And we all know that certain committees, in particular, get the reputation of having a lot of people call about complaints and so forth. And my recommendation is that, and I know to a great extent you try to do this, but both sides of the complaint should be heard, heard from. And I, I just want to point out, since we haven't had, we haven't given you a report for two years, but in, in, considering the number of cases that come before us, which, decisions that are well over 200 a year, less than 2% of people are denied their project. So, I'm, I'm, this is just from my commission and from all the people here who are volunteering. Their, their time for the town, we really welcome your support of, of our efforts as well. And we appreciated the, the party at Town Hall at Christmas time.
Anyone else?
In reading this section.
Sandy, could you attend to.
Sandy Cuny, Recreation Committee Chairman. I was just looking at number three, where it says to direct all questions or concerns to the town manager. And concerns may also be addressed to the Board of Selectmen. But keeping in mind that the Board of Selectmen are the ones who make the appointments. You appoint us to these committees, so we fall directly under you. You're really who we should go to. So, but, understanding the form of government, I, I would just change that to, you know, we can direct our concerns to the town manager, but certainly you should be CC on anything and everything.
It's not on that specific topic, but on this section, if that's okay.
That's fine.
Thank you.
The, the points about administration are appropriate in the way this is drafted, but I also think you can take this independent of each and every board, committee, or commission. The administration for the Board of Health could be the health agent, or for the recreation department can be the recreation director. So, I think if you think, think a little bit, a little bit more specifically, maybe we can help sharpen that language up a little bit. And I think the boards and committees do that.
Judy, you really should get a chair down there.
No, no, it's okay. I'll just get my own mic. So, I'm, I'm thinking that maybe there needs to be some sections to this, based on different kinds of boards and committees. And, and I need to have my memory jiggled on elected boards. And I, I'm thinking, based on the charter, that that would be the school committee, the Board of Library Trustees, the planning board, and the housing authority. Are there any other elected boards?
Judy?
The finding committees elected by.
That's right, Judy.
By town me, okay, but, but by the community or by the voters of the town. Those are the four elected boards? Okay.
Library trustees.
Yeah. And, and so, I, and I know that in the charter, those four elected boards, it's stipulated if they have any special duties and responsibilities. And I'm going to brag that we have the shortest amount of space in the charter, but the greatest autonomy at the school committee. And it says that we have general charge of all the public schools and shall have the powers and duties of school committees. And we actually have a policy that states that unlike any other board in this town, we have autonomous authority, and that's to provide education under the laws of the state of the Commonwealth. So, so that's one group that your statements here that say, you know, all, a member of any board, committee, or commission, those things just don't apply to.
And you're absolutely right.
The school committee.
I think, I very much appreciate having you come and providing the feedback, but I think in the case of the school committee, you do have that autonomy. And the board, I mean, obviously, this is a, a policy that we're creating for the town.
Right.
But the school committee creates its own policies and own governance, so a lot of this.
But I'd still like to be included in this handbook, but perhaps a section that is for those elected boards.
Okay.
And then there are advisory, appointed advisory, and appointed regulatory. And I think the wording's going to be very different for those two kinds of groups. And so, to maybe section it off, so that if you're on a regulatory board, you go to that section and, and it's, the language is correct. So, that would just be an organizational matter in your text, and it would be more helpful to all of those members.
Thank you. Anyone else? Section B. Ahmed?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In that particular case that Judy just brought out, the one thing that comes to mind is on the Veterans Advisory Board. It's like when the town manager makes his recommendation to you, you have to approve it. And then, if you don't approve it, he'll come back with another recommendation. The majority of our board is made up, except for the last three that you people put on, is made up of people that have been appointed by the commanders of the organization. You either approve that, or you don't approve it. So, that's going to have to be spelled out in here. Because basically, you only have those three that you appoint.
Section B, last call. Section C, Relationship to Other Board, Commission, or Committee Members. And there are items one through five here. Hearing no feedback. Takes us to the appendices. We're not going to go through these individually, because these are, in essence, documents that come from the state, or, or at least Appendix A is the summary of the open meeting law. So, we're not going to go through this specifically. A lot of this is worded straight from the state, and it's been copied here for everyone's edification.
Well, maybe, but if you tried to read the first paragraph on certification, it is completely incomprehensible. It seems that two weeks, within two weeks after somebody's elected or appointed, everybody has to do something. Everybody on the board. Everybody, period. It says whichever occurs, all members of public bodies must, now, what you, what it means is, all newly-appointed members.
Oh.
Must, but this is all members, so. Talk about a little.
The other ones already have by law.
Right, but it, it doesn't say, it doesn't distinguish between the new member who's just been appointed.
I see what you're saying.
And those who are already there. It says all members.
Yeah, within two weeks of a member's election, all members of public bodies.
It's also improbable that the election or appointment would precede the taking of the oath of office.
It's a.
Would come after, I'm sorry, would, would succeed. The, the, nobody takes the oath until they're appointed, as far as, as far as I.
You just add the word such after all.
But we can't change it. That's the Attorney General's wording. It's their document. They're really not ours.
Yeah. We, we can provide that feedback to the state, maybe. I'll, you know, we'll, we'll get some guidance from Town Council to see if this is, I don't think this is cast in stone, and we might be able to make some clarifications like that, but in general. So, this goes on for seven pages. And then, on page 15 is Appendix B, which is a summary of the Conflict of Interest Law. And again, this is taken from the state. So, we're not going to go through this specifically, but if anyone has any suggestions, as Mr. Gross did, that we can feed these back to Town Council and to the state and see if they want to make any changes. Betsy?
I'm still back, in pages one through six. And I don't know where it is. At one point, you had something about removal of people from boards, that you were going to work on that policy?
It's not in here yet.
No, no, but I, I just have a suggestion.
Okay.
That could be put in what, what you have now, that all members of boards are special employees of the town, or are subject, is it subject to the same laws of behavior and so forth, that all town employees are subject to?
Under, well, on page four, Section G, Special Municipal Employees, it says, "The Board of Selectmen shall annually review the composition of all boards, committees, and commissions to ensure that all positions are appointed as special municipal employees." But you're right, it doesn't have any wording in there regarding.
But I would specifically say, they're all, all employees of the town are subject to the laws of the town regarding employee behavior.
I, I think that's a question that we need to ask Town Council, because not everyone is designated as a special town employee. I think that's.
Well, well, whoever is.
Right, okay.
I know he always, Frank always points me out in those, in those open meeting laws and says that on this.
Well, you're, I mean, you're a run of regulatory.
Right, he always says that I'm the subject to being thrown in jail as anybody who gets paid by the town.
Right.
So. Anyway, I, I think that should be in there, that people recognize that.
Okay.
That they do.
We, we do need a, a section in there on removal, and that, we, Town Council is working on drafting that, but maybe that would be a quick and easy way to add some verbiage, at least to get us to that point. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I think in both the open meeting law and the conflict of interest law, that we should give the appropriate, what do I want to call it? I can't think of the word. That they are documents from the.
The statutes or the.
Yes, that they are, yeah, that citation, that they are actually taken from the regulations of the Attorney General and the regulations of the Ethics Commission. So, they don't look like they are the town's documents. Can you call it approbation? What is it?
Attribution.
That's what we need, a correct attribution.
All right, so that takes here of Appendix B. And then, we get to page 23, and And then we get to page twenty-three, and these are the board's policies. And the first of them, Appendix C, is the online posting policy. Any questions or comments about this?
I think you'll be talking about the minutes a little bit later in the agenda, but it would be nice to see other departments not only post the agendas, but the draft decisions, the actual decisions, the minutes. I mean, that helps a lot. I had a zoning article, maybe some of you remember, but, you know, I was trying to get some information, you know, what was said during that, and I'd look it up, and it'd be months, and for all I know, it's still not there, so. Be nice for the public to have that at timely fashion. I think it says something in the charter that it has to be in there, X amount of days or whatever, right?
Minutes are, oh, you mean for the draft decisions? It's in the charter?
Minutes, yeah. Well, in particular, minutes, that'd be nice.
Yeah. Minutes, and a lot of the verbiage in here actually comes from state law regarding open meeting law and posting regulations, and then that includes the minutes as well. That's the ten business days that are mentioned in here is actually straight from state law. But we could expand on this policy to say that draft decisions should also be posted online, or decisions should be posted online?
I think that'd be helpful.
Thank you.
Sorry to bother you, Mr. Chairman. But as far as it goes on that number four, general policy and responsibility, it is impossible for the Veterans Advisory to do that, because we only meet once a month.
Then I would refer you to section five--
Okay.
--which said, "If approved minutes are not available, draft minutes will be made available." And again, this is a provision in state law, so that if there's a committee that meets only once a month, or does not, or cannot make that ten-day period, that draft minutes must be made available to the public. And then the following month, when you go to, when you meet again and approve your minutes, then those would replace the draft minutes.
So what I might suggest is an addendum added to the draft stating that these minutes have not been voted upon, but are submitted for informational value only.
Thank you.
This is actually, I have a question, clarification perhaps. For agendas, there's a forty-eight hour posting requirement. I have noted that some other boards of health in the Commonwealth actually say, have a specific agenda item for, placeholder for things that come up to the chair's attention following the forty-eight hour posting. And we, as a, as a rule, have not considered those, even if they come in on late Thursday afternoon, because the agenda's already been posted, usually by that point, we don't consider it. This is perhaps a question for the town attorney, but is that of, would it be acceptable to, do you have any idea whether it's acceptable to do that? To have a, you know, if we get communications, for example, Friday morning, before our, we get our packets, because we have Monday evening meetings, as you do, I have no idea whether it's legal to consider items.
I think it depends on the items. I mean, some things you can put, for example, on our, you don't see it on our meeting, well, you do sort of see it on our meeting tonight, the announcements and proclamations, some general items, you can do like that. But if it's something specific, and it may, in your case, you folks are--
It's always specific.
Yeah, and you folks are talking about a hearing, a public hearing.
Not necessarily. There are often, items of communication, items sort of for our information, but for discussion, potentially for discussion, because we discuss our--
And the open meeting law says that the chair, if there is an issue that comes up that the chair determines to be an emergency, then the chair can put that on the agenda. And then whatever agenda was posted has to be revised, and it has to be shown that it's a revised agenda. But it's really up to the chair to decide if that issue should be posted on the agenda. And that assumes that there will be a discussion. But if you're just talking about communications, where you want to, you know, relate to the public, that you receive certain communications, I don't think that would be included in the regular agenda. But you can check that with council.
Okay, I'll check.
But that's what the open meeting law says.
And what we do is we have correspondence as an agenda item on ours, in which you can at least announce the correspondence is out there, maybe not make a vote on it, but at least get the word out to the information.
Right.
I think it's important to note that the discussion cannot be a one-sided discussion meeting. If someone submits something to you, they happen to come that evening and you discuss it, we don't afford the ability for the opposing view to be there that evening.
That's the concern.
The board can talk about it, but if, you cannot engage the public unless both sides of the public have been made aware that that is going to happen.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions about the online posting policy? And we'll go to the speakers' policy. Any questions about this? Actually, anyone who watches the Board of Selectmen may have noticed, in the last year, I've started announcing the members of the board, and that is part of the speakers' policy. This evening, I erred and forgot to do that, so it is something that, it does happen from time to time, that we even forget to follow our own policies, but it's certainly not intentional.
Another great guideline, but similar thing. I realize some boards are less formal, you know, like Ahmed said, his board maybe meets once a month. It's only five people, basically just throwing ideas around, so they don't really need to go through this sort of thing. Although I like this, because it's very similar to what the ZBA adopted in 2008, so I do like the guideline.
Thank you. Betsy, did you--
My only comment was, I didn't even know you had a policy like that until I happened to see the back of the door going into the Selectmen's meeting room. And except for the fact that, I mean, basically, that's how to run a good meeting. You know, I thought it was a good set, except for introducing the people. And I don't introduce the people on our board, partly because we, we have, well, you do too, but we have people coming in and out all the time. And even if I were to introduce it right in the beginning, that would be like a tenth of the people would hear. But, but generally, I mean, I think the ideas that you have there are good, and especially if, as you do, and we do, and some of the other boards do, have sort of contentious hearings sometimes.
Actually, here's a question, perhaps if anyone has any feedback on this. It does talk about introducing all board members present to the public, and identify voting members if there are alternate or associate members. And obviously, in situations where there are alternates, such as with the Conservation Commission or the ZBA, that may be applicable. But is it, and perhaps you can provide feedback on whether you think it's adequate to have name tags? I mean, obviously, some committees don't have name tags, and when we talk about the informality, for example, I know I've sat in bikeways, for example, in a small room, without name tags, you can't always tell who's a committee member and who isn't. And having an announcement of who's a member of the committee in that situation might be necessary. But in a more formal setting such as this, where we have our name tags, maybe not. So we could maybe change the verbiage there. Ed, do you want to--
As if--
The microphone, so the folks at home will be able to hear you.
That's a very, very good reflection. I sit on some committees where there are name tags, and it is very helpful. Is there a facility to obtain name tags for committees, if we so desire?
Yeah, I think we could go through--
Town manager's office.
Well, that's, I think, that ought to be extended. A good idea. Great one.
So the speakers' policy, I'm curious, is this for public comment?
No, this isn't the public comment policy. This is the speaker's policy--
This is for public hearings?
Yes.
Okay.
Public meetings, public hearings, essentially, behavior.
Okay, so, public hearings, at least for school committee, we have very restrictive guidelines for public hearings. Public meetings, different situation. So that's why I was curious, is this specifically for public hearings?
This is, this applies to public meetings, and it may even apply, the way it reads, it's more or less guidelines as to how we expect a speaker to behave in a public meeting, and it may also, it can also apply to public hearings. We ourselves actually have a set, a draft set of procedures for hearings that differ from the way we might usually conduct our business, so.
Okay, so that's why I was confused on exactly what the focus of the speakers' policy was.
This came out of some difficult situations that had happened with some town committees and the way individuals from the public conducted themselves. And it was decided to adopt a standard policy, so that anybody who comes before the board and, or comes before any town committee and speaks, that this is the behavior that's expected.
Okay.
The reference to public hearings in the first sentence--
Yes.
--is general, not to a specific hearing.
Okay. All right.
Although maybe that should read meetings.
I think so. Because that includes, that would include hearings as well.
Yeah, because all meetings, all hearings are meetings, but not all meetings are hearings. Betsy?
Hi, again, this might be specific to CONCOM, but we are, we do clearly state who's on the quorum before there's a vote.
Okay.
When, I mean, you remember that.
Yeah.
So that, so that the public knows who was at all the previous public hearings on a topic.
Anyone else? Going once, going twice? All right, and then we have the committee appointment policy, which has seen some revisions And perhaps our earlier discussions about appointments that are in the earlier section of the handbook, perhaps might want to refer to this as one of the appendices to specifically point out this. Because this, as the discussions that we've had so far this evening, this actually does define and clarify the difference between advisory committees and regulatory committees. Judy?
I see in the paragraph here, it talks about you have responsibility for over three hundred people to over forty-four committees. And I just did a quick scan, and I know this is Paul, one of Paul Dryer's favorite topics. One of your favorite topics is the number of committees in the town falmouth. So we received a list of committee chairs, and thus the committees, and I think it only totals in the thirties. And so, in a document like this, I'd be very careful putting those kind of stats in there, because committees come and committees go. But what it leads me to ask is, if in this handbook, you wouldn't have a page that would come and go, you know, that would get updated, and it would literally list the elected committees, the advisory committees, the regulatory committees, and, you know, as, as times change. And that way, you'd know who needed to get this handbook. So I don't envy you the positions that you have of trying to keep track of that many people and that many committees, but I think this manual is a really great start. And I wanted to compliment you on the open meeting law section, because when I was reviewing this, I discovered that our policy manual for the school committee was out of date on the open meeting law section. So thank you for doing a good job on that.
And thank you for the feedback. We can actually, we could add that as another one of the appendices, a list of the committees, and that's a very good idea. I like that.
Just one quick thing. Number nine, if the only applicant to an advisory committee is incumbent, good standing, seeking reappointment, the board may waive the requirement for a public interview by majority vote. I think regardless, you should conduct an interview, just to, you know, just so the public sees who's getting on it, because it, then it kind of gives the feel like, oh, they're just sliding this guy through or this woman through because they like them. I don't know, to me, anyway, it just seems like the right thing to do. And when you do do these reappointments, I think it's important, I mean, not all committees or boards have an administrator, but it would be nice to, you gain the administrator's input, as well as the chairman, or, you know, chairperson's input, you know, how do they work with the board, that sort of thing. And we'll touch on liaison later, but I'm sure they can play a part also.
I thought it was in here, but maybe it was just part of the, part of the handbook itself to make the mention of recommendations from the respective chairs.
That's for the vacancy.
The vacancy, yeah. So maybe that, that would perhaps be more appropriately placed into the policy. But the, the section nine was actually included in there. There was actually, a few years ago, some discussion amongst the board about re-interviewing all of the committee chairs when, or, excuse me, the committee members when their terms expired. But again, looking at the sheer numbers of committees, and even if we're at a point right now where we're sort of an ebb, and there's fewer committees now than there were, say, three or four years ago, the sheer number of individuals interviewing all of them at once, or even over the course of, you know, the few weeks ahead of the expiration of the terms in June, the board would be spending every meeting for a month or two doing interviews with all of the sheer numbers of individuals. And this is why it was suggested that it was, be done this way. And I don't know if you're aware, but it is, and maybe it needs to be placed here in the policy, but we do advertise a list of the individuals who are going to be reappointed, so that the public knows and can provide feedback.
No, I understand. You just triggered something else that I wanted to say. Like, I've gone to your meetings, and I see you do the, go through the interview process, and one of the big questions you always ask is, how would you work with the board, that sort of thing? But there never seems to be any follow-up, so that follow-up could be through the administrator or the chair, you know? So the interview, even though the person is an incumbent, that'd be helpful. You know, maybe they don't play well with others' noses, you know?
Thank you.
I think it's important to note that just because someone is up for reappointment does not necessarily mean that that seat is uncontested. That means that if, in fact, someone else wants to apply for that same position, they can do so, and the board will interview that candidate that wants to apply. The board wants to then bring in the candidate that's up for reappointment, they have the ability to do that. But just because merely someone re-appeals for a position, with all due respect to everybody else in this community, if they want to seek that same position, they have every right to apply for that same position as well. But I think it's important to note that with over forty committees, roughly two appointments a year, never mind vacancies, that would be roughly eighty interviews just in the month of June, to interview incumbents specifically for uncontested seats, would be virtually impossible for this board to accomplish, in the amount of meeting time that we have, by generally not doing our regular day-to-day business as well. But I think it's important to note that every position can be challenged on every committee for the public.
Any last questions or comments about the appointment policy?
Paul Dryer, member of Planning Board, and I'm also a member of the Charter Review Committee. And since Ms. Fenwick took liberty with some of my opinions, I like to give an opinion now. I compliment the Board of Selectmen dealing with this issue. The Charter Review Committee report in November of 2012 recommended fifteen articles for approval, which were done by the Board-- which were done by the board of selectmen, and the vote is incorporated in the charter. But there were a number of issues that were recommended, both administrative and operational issues. And the first operational issue was to deal with this committee handbook, so my compliments to you for dealing with this issue, because we think it was very important. Thank you.
And obviously, we did too, so. All right, if we have no other comments about the handbook? And again, if, if you have any grammatical or typos or whatnot, any, anything, please come up. Please, by all means, forward that to the board.
Tom Corvo, vice chair of the conservation commission. Sometimes as a volunteer, I get overwhelmed with the, the board and how much it, it takes on you. And I can look in this room, and I'm encouraged again. I'm grateful for all the people that are behind me, and I really do feel like a lot of these people have my back. I've talked casually out of the hearings and such to many of you, and I am deeply proud of my town. And at the beginning of this meeting, we talked about vacancies. And for the people at home, this is a great opportunity to really give back what we have all been given. We have a great community, it's very, it's, I've always had a diamond in the rough, different facets, different shine. But the opportunity to contribute to this, I'm grateful for. My contribution is far different than anyone else's here, and theirs is far different than mine. And that's what always is going to make this balance work. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no other questions or comments on the handbook, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. And that is communications. And it was mentioned earlier of the liaisons. That is something that in years past, the, the board has assigned liaisons. The program has worked and it hasn't worked, and this is why we'd like to get some feedback about what you think would work, what doesn't work. We have in years past had issues with members of the board trying to direct or impose their will on the committees that they are assigned to liaise with. There have been issues with members of the board not even participating as a liaison with the boards. And this year, earlier this year, the board sort of held off on assigning liaisons because it was a general feeling that we needed to get a better handle on this situation and figure out what it is that, how it is that we can best communicate to you and with you so that you all have the information that you need from us, so that you have the ear of the board, and so that we can get communications to you. So, sort of a free-for-all right now. Will you feel comfortable with having assigned liaisons? Does it work for those of you who have had it in the past? Is it something that you think, is there something that could work better? Your thoughts, your feelings, even amongst the board? Where do we want to start?
I, I think, I'll, go ahead.
Kevin go first, and then Betsy gets to go.
I know the board has discussed this in the past, and, and in some situations, many of us go to a lot of meetings whether we're a liaisoned or not. The only downside I can say with having a liaison was expectations of a committee, of that liaison, meaning that if they were assigned a liaison from the board of selectmen, they had expectations that we would be an advocate for that committee, or would be the conduit back to the board of selectmen for that committee, and specifically for the administration. I think it, it's, it's beholden on every member of this board to be active in the community and to be able to know what's going on, whether it be just reading minutes of meetings and things of that nature. But the good part of liaisons was that I think that many committees felt that there was a connection. The downside was that there were some committees that were being represented by specific members of the board of selectmen in the past who were advocating for that committee, and it was not fair for the, the committee, and it was not fair for the rest of the board because the board didn't have all of that same knowledge that that one liaison had happened to have. And they needed to communicate that specifically. And most of the recommendations that committees have come through the, the town manager's office more than the board of selectmen, specifically with items of finance. I mean, their, committees are very altruistic, and, and I would hope that you would. You would want to carry the, the torch, the banner for the specific group that you advocate for, whether it be the bikeways committee, the waterways committee, or the beach committee. Each and every one of you, and committees, wants to advocate for that group. Unfortunately, a lot of times advocating for something means dollars and cents. And as the folks in the finance committee know, and the board of selectmen, the town manager, we only have so much money. And even though we want to be able to give everything to every committee, which means give everything to the public in this community, we only have so many tax dollars. So the whole idea is, I just want to make sure that we continue on with the liaison program, that there isn't the wrong expectations. And they have grown that way by, in some committees, that there are expectations when they have a, a member of the board of selectmen on their committee, that they will go back and get them additional clerical help, get them this, because a lot of those things are budgetary items that the board has an ultimate vote on, but the day-to-day operations based on the charter from the town manager's office. So that's my two cents worth there. But I know that we have not had assignments this year, and because of that, I don't think our communication was as good as it could have been.
Betsy, and then Mr. Fenwick.
Well, I'm just going to add a penny to what, what Kevin just said. Actually, for several years, Ahmed was our liaison, which worked out perfectly because he filmed us for FCTV. So he sat through hours and hours of our hearings, and we didn't, we didn't really have any reason, he didn't have anything to report to us from the selectmen, nor did we have anything we had to ask him about. And I guess I'd like to pick up on something you, you pointed out. Brent, you'll remember this. We, we have a, we, we have a, a system in ConCom where we have, say, we have four notices of intent, and that's assigned to someone. Someone's assigned to a notice. But really, the, the purpose of that was that at least one other person other than the staff went to visit a site. Really, we all try to get to every site, but, but it doesn't work out every week. And if you couldn't go to the one you were assigned to, you call someone to make sure that somebody went to that. But, but in fact, that's sort of the only role. The problem with having that, and what you just brought up, the problem with having, like Doug has visited us the last two, two weeks at ConCom, the problem with having a, a set person is just what you say. The person sort of becomes an advocate with the group. I, I think what's nice, it is nice, I mean, I know all of you, but I think a lot of the committee members maybe don't. And I think if, if it's, and maybe this could be in the handbook, but if, if there's, if it's clear, if people have a question, who, who, I mean, I'm comfortable going to Julian and Heather also, but I think some people might not know where to go if they need something or they need to ask advice. I know when I was first on the committee, and I, we were doing an RFP for something, I went into, to the manager's office, and I, you know, I said, well, how do I do this? You know, I had no idea. So somehow it's clear, maybe when you have that original committee, that the meeting you're planning to have in July with the committee heads, say, this is, if you do have questions about, if you need clerical help, et cetera, et cetera, I mean, we're, we have a department who's behind us, but a lot of the committees don't. Who to go, who, who should we go to for help? If we need the, if we need to get to the board of selectmen, should we go to talk to Julian first so we can see the best way to approach you? So I, I don't, I don't know that liaisons are that important. It is, what I think is nice is, is to have personal, I think it's great that everybody here is interacting with you personally. I think it makes for a lot more positive view, and everybody realizes we're, you know, we have the same goal. We might not have the same way to get there.
Thank you. Mark?
Just want to add, if committees don't have any luck pursuing their problem, within most often a week or two weeks at the most, they have the ability to come here in the comment period and air, ask, whatever their problem is, and should get solved in that manner.
Thank you.
I wanted to make a couple of comments, and apologize for leaving almost immediately after, so you won't have a chance to.
Thank you for coming, so.
I'm sorry. We have had relatively little, or a lot, in the way of liaison, but nothing official. And I think, while the idea is very good, it could, it has some traps built into it, as I'm sure everybody realizes. And I, I would suggest that rather than appoint a single liaison, that you appoint two people. A, a lead liaison and an alternative, an alternate, so that if things don't gel, or if the information isn't available, or somebody's out of town, whoever it is on the committee, the committee chair or whatever, could get advice from someone else. And there may actually be different information. My, my committee has the, the fun of, of interacting with agencies from the state, from the DOT on down to DPW and every, every imaginable thing in between. And a lot of what I get from members, and particularly new members, is how do we, how do we make things happen, number one? And number two, how do we open a discussion about a topic with the, with those who are going to make the decisions? People don't know. And having someone to go to, say, well, we want to see that, you know, this street is better for bicycling, or we want to see that this area is, is sealed off, or whatever, nobody knows where to start. You're the policymakers. We often end up talking to non-policymakers, and that's a mistake. So I, I think that it's, it's a valuable idea. I think it ought to be as, as approachable, accessible as possible. And I think it ought to be fairly vigorous. You know, a phone call every couple of months or an email, can we meet, or do you need help, or what questions can you answer? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for this, thanks for this program, Mrs. Fenwick.
And thank you for the feedback, Ed.
I'd just like to echo his comments. Sometimes, I think the liaison's important. Sometimes it's just, it could just be a yes or no, you know, answer, that simple. I'm not saying you have to be David Bragger. He was at the ZBA meetings, you know, every Thursday night for, I don't know, a year. Although it was nice to see Doug the other nights, but I didn't, I thought maybe he was auditioning for our liaison, at least that was.
Oh, no, not after that.
He's trying to decide which one he wants.
But like I said before, input towards, you know, when you do the reappointment, also, even just for this handbook, the liaisons can see, you know, this works well for this board, not so well for that board, you know, and I think it's helpful. Plus, it, you know, makes the, you know, the committee members or the board members feel like someone, you know, you guys care, you're all, you know, you came to the meeting, you were that interested, or whatever. I do realize, you know, you're not going to come back to the board and be our advocate, you know? I don't think anybody's expecting that, but I, I do think it's a good idea. Hopefully you do it.
Thank you.
Jason George's Beach Committee. As a committee chair of an advisory committee, a lot of times we do vote on things that will go back to the board of selectmen, and not having an advocate, but someone who has a basis of knowledge of what we're trying to accomplish. There are monies in the Beach Committee that we vote on to appropriate towards certain projects, but if no one's there from the board of selectmen, sometimes, not that it's ever happened, but the monies may not be allocated by a vote because no one really knows what's going on, or no one knows what we've discussed. So having a liaison on a, especially an advisory committee, is, I think, is very important to have someone to come in and say, to know what the tone of the committee is and what, you know, what we're looking to accomplish.
Thank you. Anyone else? Linda?
Hi, Linda Davis, and I am not currently on any committee, but I attend committee meetings frequently, wide range. And I know in the past, it has been raised, the question, you know, who's our liaison? Where is he or she? You know, who do we go to? And so I really think that it, there is, it's very important that there be one, and that they establish some kind of rapport. The liaison obviously doesn't have to go to all the meetings, but is aware of some of the general workings and issues that the committee is dealing with. But also, having gone to many of these committee meetings where this issue's come up, I have also said to committee members that, you know, if you don't hear from this selectman, go to them. Find out who they are, and if there isn't one, ask to have one. Because leadership just isn't, you know, for you people, we need leadership in the committees. And so I said, you don't get the answer you want, you go find that answer. So it's a two-way street. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thoughts, feedback on liaisons? On other, and on other means of communication? We do have, obviously, there's the online posting policy sort of dovetails into this a little bit, and some of this is about communicating also with the public. There's been some discussion, the charter review committee was mentioned, and they in fact had made some recommendations about changing the town's website to make it more user-friendly. I can say that one of the, some feedback that I've received from some members of the public was that they wish we had the ability to sort of subscribe to committees so that, for example, if you go to the Bike Race Committee webpage, you can click on a link and put your email address in, and you might get notified when there's an agenda, when minutes are posted, that sort of thing. That can be done right now, but the town's website, the way it's constructed, doesn't allow that at this point in time. But that's certainly one of the things that people have asked about. And if there's any other feedback, not just regarding liaisons and your communication to us and ours to you, but also how do you communicate with the public? Is there anything that you'd like to see? Anything that you'd like the, the town to do to make it easier? And if you don't have anything now, that's all right, just bring it back to us when it comes to mind. Betsy?
I, I might be dropping the gun, because I know you have a beating post, you have a meeting proposed in, in July, which I think is a good idea. But when we talk about what committees are hoping to, to achieve, and sort of cross committees, I've, in the last year, I've, a bunch of different committees has, have asked me to come to committees to, to, to put in sort of ConCom two cents on various projects. I wonder, and I don't know that summertime would be the best time, but maybe fall or spring, when, when we're not going to be snowed out, and we're not out sailing. We could have like a, no, maybe just a, a selectmen's meeting where each of the committees, and I don't know, are there, are there really 30 some odd committees? But could be given maybe seven minutes to quickly say what the goals of that committee are? I mean, I think it would be helpful for the town, too. What the goals of the committee are and what they're hoping to achieve in the next year. And, and I think there might be a lot, you might find that, that there's a lot of interaction in that. You know, people, a lot of times people are working on similar things and don't even realize it. I mean, I usually find out a lot, because I talk to a lot of people, but not everybody talks as much as Kevin or I.
Thanks a lot, Betsy.
Well, and, you know, that raises an important question, and it's one of the things that, and I can't speak for everybody on the board, but I know I've heard some of that feedback sometimes myself from advisory committees who have said, well, the board never listens to what we have to say, or advisory committees which have said, you know, we'd like to, to know what the board wants us to do, but we're not hearing from them in terms of, you know, what is it that we should be working on? So it sounds like there, there may be some opportunity. there, there may be some opportunities there for improving communication. And I don't know if, I guess the question is, is, is it what the committee wants to achieve, or is it what the board wants the committee to work on? And maybe that's where we need to have some, a better definition of what it is that the committees should be doing.
The other question I'd love to find out from the boards and the different committees is, what can the Board of Selectmen do to show our support for what they've worked, that the committees are doing? They're charged to do different jobs. What can we do as a board to then show the support and appreciation for the work they're doing? And communication is one piece of it, but I think there may be other things we can also do.
This is the kind of thing the board is interested in. There are some meeting processes that Julie and I could research that many organizations, ICMA has looked at, that you'd have a breakout type of session where each member of the board would have a table, and you'd have five tables, and you'd have the committees broken down into smaller groups. And then someone from that group would have the obligation to report out to the full, full meeting at the end of the meeting. So it would be sort of rather quick and timely, but it does create a sense of engagement, at least for that, that member of the board and the committees that they're sitting with. And so we could take a look at a, a process, if that's something you're interested in.
One, one other thing, Ed. I know Doug, you had mentioned this when we were speaking about this about a year ago. We've tried to reorganize our government, meaning bring together some departments, brought together the Department of Finance, read it environment. Maybe we need to start looking as a board to bring together groups of committees, because there are, as Betsy said, some overlapping scenarios. The Mike's Committee, the Buildings' Appeals Committee, as well as Conservation, zoning, those, those folks all have very similar things, that we might be able to bring them together as one workshop. Whereas folks like in the Waterways, in Beach Committee, and Recreation have a lot of similar things. Because typically when we dredge a harbor, we're putting the spoils on a beach. So we need to look at maybe grouping these committees together, and rather than have a liaison that goes here, goes there, have a liaison for a group of committees. And then maybe we could have some little workshops, independent with those particular groups, and let them share ideas. That's what our role is as leaders, is to try to bring together these individual groups and see how we collectively, as a town, move forward an issue. I mean, and unfortunately, that would probably be bringing the Finance Committee into most of these little groups, because then, you know, there is some money. I mean, it's not only just the Board of Selectmen, but we need to know where to spend our dollar to get the best bang for the buck in our government. So there are some ways for us to streamline this, and we need to probably think about that as a, as a Board of Selectmen. But I think what I'm hearing tonight is, they want some kind of conduit to bring things together. But I don't think it's necessarily, always has to be the Board of Selectmen. If we help bring together a few committees, I think it would be a great think tank, because we're talking about ultimately reforming the way our town government is laid out in, in the building, having all permitting on one floor. Well, we need to get everyone to start talking, break down some walls so that we know that we can work together. What do you think will help this group versus that group? So it's just an opportunity. I think it would be well-served for the board and the committees. That's just a general observation.
Any other feedback? It's all about communications. All right. I think we can move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the committee membership. And there's various things here. Obviously, we've talked about vacancies and recruitment, and the board does try to announce at the beginning of each of our meetings that the various vacancies. Again, we're looking for feedback from you folks in terms of how we might better be able to recruit people. We announce at meetings, we put advertisements in the paper periodically, but, and obviously, there are even members of the board who, you know, we've gone out and sort of, you know, pressed the flesh and beat the pavement and tried to get folks, you know, to actually come in and, and apply for positions. What other methods of recruitment and, and filling vacancies can you recommend? Can you suggest? And then the larger issue, you know, as mentioned tonight, the, the 30 some odd or 40 some odd committees, depending on when in time you're counting them. Are there committees? There are committees that are regulatory in nature, the ZBA, the CONCOM, those aren't going anywhere. There are committees that are actually created by the Charter, which include the Beach Committee, the Commission on Disabilities, I believe. But there are also advisory committees that the board has created over time, which may have outlived their usefulness. And one of them that we've had a perennial problem with getting vacancies filled for is the, the Transportation Management Commission. So any thoughts that you all have on any of these topics and the, your, your membership as well? What works, what doesn't? Thoughts from the board? Tom?
I am going to be repeating myself, and this is a challenge to the ones out watching this. Everywhere I go, I've asked people, as far as conservation goes, I know what that threshold is. Water experience, construction, the scientists, you know, it's a very diverse board. No one should feel intimidated about being on a committee, because what you may think is a limitation is really an asset. That we need that mixture, it's a, it's a collage. It's, it's, it's not one type of person that fits on a board. And even if it's a one-year, you try it and it, you can't do it, no one's going to fault you. It's, it's everywhere, like every Lumbia, grocery shopping, job lot, whatever. You know, it, it becomes part of the conversation. And it's, you know, my statement is being, you know, sometimes I get overrun. Well, life can overrun you. And this is one way to really give back. It's, it's, it's impressive. When it works right, it's incredible. When things are just flowing and it, it's, you get to participate in it, it really is a big difference. And I hope somebody hears that and at least tries. It doesn't have to be the conservation. Plenty of reading, lots of the good stuff there. But some of these other ones that aren't as, that aren't regulatory, that give you just a little bit more, you know, it, it adds to your life.
Thanks, Tom. Anyone else want to weigh in? Like I said, if you have any ideas that come to you after the meeting, please send them our way. This probably won't be the first time that we hold a workshop of this sorts. And certainly, the board's got a lot of information that we're going to be probably mulling over in the next few weeks and months, as, as we take this feedback and, and start making changes and improvements and so on. So I'll move on to the next section of our agenda, which is the Annual Committee Chairman Orientation. And this is something that the board had originally discussed this during our retreat last year, and it's something that was received favorably, and it seems to be getting some traction. One of the things that we realized is that, obviously, there's that intimidation factor that Tom talks about. When folks are appointed to a committee, there's a lot to learn. There are state regulations regarding open meeting law, regarding conflicts of interest with regulatory boards. There are various laws and regulations that need to be known. And one of the things that the board discussed was that after all the appointments are made, the terms, of course, begin July 1st. And at that point, sometime in the month of July, having a, a workshop, or several if needed, in order to accommodate individual schedules, where we would have a review of all of these things, of the open meeting law, of the, the online posting policy, of the conflict of interest, an opportunity for new chairs and new committee members to sit down with town council, with members of the board, with members of the town manager's office, to make sure that they are, an orientation of sorts, to make sure that they have all the information that they need to get started and to help them in the process. Obviously, we've got on here, the, the handbook would become a key feature of, of that particular session, because everything in there, I think, would, would be reviewed. The question is, what else should be reviewed? Is there anything here that we've missed? What are your thoughts about such a meeting? Do you think it should be one session, multiple sessions? Who do you think would be a good idea to have there? Like I said, we've talked about town council to help review the laws, town management perhaps, to Selectmen in order to help open up lines of communications. What else? Thoughts from the board?
I think this is a great idea. I'm, this is my first year as chairman, so, you know, it's a little intimidating. But I was fortunate enough to, and unfortunate enough, to fill big shoes in Matt McNamara, but he kind of orientated me into, you know, expectations, you know, that sort of thing, you know. So I was fortunate, he was excellent at doing that. But besides yourselves, maybe somebody like Betsy who's been at it a while, you know, runs a nice meeting, you could have someone from other boards help, help that along also, that's a chairman. But I think that, that's a great idea. Hopefully you, you do do this in July. I'll be there. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thoughts?
Could we come back to the issue of the liaisons? Are we going to do anything about that this evening, or is it at another agenda item with the Selectmen?
I think what we'll do is at a future meeting, we'll take the feedback that we have here, and we'll look towards perhaps reviewing and updating our liaison policy. I think there's good ideas that were presented here tonight. I liked what Kevin had to say about perhaps trying to group the, the committees into categories that we then assign a liaison to a category of, a, a group of committees. But that would require a little bit of discussion amongst the board to see how we could make that work, so.
I don't think I've ever been this quiet at a Selectmen's meeting. And I think if any of you that know me, when I have an opinion, I kind of come right at it. I really know very, very little about the committees. And I did my homework in reading this, and I thought I kind of knew what was going on. So in talking about a new person in a new position, that's what I work through. So when you think about people volunteering, you need to think in your committees that you have to give them some assistance. And you need to let them know, it was said, and I'm not really sure just who said it, that when a new person comes into a committee, someone has got to help that person. And maybe they want to volunteer, but I would say this evening, as I sat and I listened, I learned a lot from you, and I took a lot of notes. But I came in thinking I was, I was kind of prepared. But I needed to have listened to you, and I appreciated that. And I don't think you'll ever see another meeting with me so quiet. Thank you.
Well, I haven't said too much either, actually. But I do think that, I, I like the idea that David had of some of you as chair being part of that chairman orientation, not just the Selectmen do it. I think to have you there, or several of you, or however it works out, would be really good and far more helpful, I think, to incoming chairman, to have some of you be there to help, to participate in the orientation. So I hope you all like that idea, too.
Judy?
I've only been chair of the school committee since last May. I had big shoes to fill, and I, I don't mean that as, I don't know what size shoes you wear, Miss Mavitt. And I, I got to go to a workshop that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees runs for possible chairs. And the one most valuable thing I learned at that workshop was that the chairman of any committee is the servant of the assembly. So some, some of us think because you're chairman, you're wielding power. But really, what you're wielding is a whole lot of work. And so, so an orientation for new chairs would be very valuable as well. But luckily for, I think, a lot of us, we have the benefit of counsel from previous chairs, even though they may have moved on to higher powers. So.
Anyone else? Any thoughts? Ahmed?
Mr. Chairman, one more time. I think Ms. Harper brought out a very cogent point. If we could get together, if we have 30 committees, or advisory boards, et cetera, so on, that would mean six of the committee members sitting at this table with a select person, six over here, and so on, so forth. And I think that would open up the communication. And, you know, communication is also being able to hear and to listen to what's going on. So if that's the way it's going to be, I think that would work out fine. So if we could do that, you know, once a year at least, get six over here with one select person, and do our thing, communicate, and listen to each other. Thank you.
That sounds like an endorsement.
Well, I, I just want to make a comment, because somebody did mention, when you have a new, oh, you did, Becky, when you have a new member on your committee. I remember when I was first elected Selectman in 93, and I remember sitting at the table, Troy and I, Troy Clarkson and I were elected the same year. And the other three Selectmen were longtime veterans, Virginia Valiella, Eddie Marks, and Allison, I can't remember who the third one was.
Is it Patrick?
No, John Demello. No, it was Nate Ellis, who had been there forever. And I just remember thinking, of asking them, "Would you mind very much if I just sat here for a month and just listened?" Because one of the first things that was on our agenda was whether or not we would advise, or maybe suggest to the Board of Health that we have a smoking ban in Falmouth, if you can imagine. At that time, it seems like nothing now, but believe me, 21 years ago, it was a huge issue, because everybody smoked then. But anyway, so I, I know and I can feel and remember what it is like to be a member, a new member of a committee, and not really, even though you may have attended the meetings, you really don't get the impact of having to vote on something until you're really there. So I think that orientation is really important.
Betsy?
This is completely changing the subject again. But I just want to take the opportunity to, to thank all of you, the Board of Selectmen and Town Manager's Office. And actually, I've worked with lots of different departments on projects in town. And, you know, for the, I just want to say that I really think we have a terrific, most of the people in town are really terrific, and they want to work towards getting things done for the town. And, and I think, to echo Tom's comment, I think it's another one of those facets in the diamond, many of the town employees.
Thank you.
The paid employees.
The paid employees. All right, well, any last thoughts from the board?
This was a very good meeting. Really appreciate you being here.
All right. Well, we thank you all for coming. We really do appreciate your feedback. I hope this, this helps reinforce the fact that we do appreciate it. If you have anything that comes to mind after the fact, and again, especially with regards to the handbook, any grammatical changes or whatnot, please forward them to the office so we can get them incorporated. And it sounds like we're going to be having some more workshops, so. Thank you all very much. Any last words from the board?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? We're adjourned. Thank you.